All right, it looks like we're good.
Still scrolling on this end, but. One second. I think you're good.
So Marcy, we'll get to you before our committee meetings, if you don't mind going first.
Yeah, and I asked Marcy to join us, if that's okay. I mean, if you permit me to say so, she is with Summit County Solid Waste Management, and they have their plan, I think it's like a five-year plan, for, which requires adoption by all the municipalities and political entities within Summit County. So Marcy's gonna try to unravel a little bit about what that plan's about.
I do appreciate it. Thank you so much, Mayor Council. I appreciate your cooperation in letting me get in last minute for the meeting this evening. I would like to give you a little idea of what the solid waste plan is, as well as go through with the ratification processes. The mayor mentioned both of those. As one of Ohio's 52 solid waste districts, one of our requirements is to submit a solid waste plan every five years. So even though our plan in our document is a 15-year plan from 2021 to 2036, hard to believe we're looking out that far, we have the opportunity to update this plan every five years, and we are in that cycle. The last time New Franklin approved this plan was around 2014. And what we are, what we're doing in this plan is we have to not only show adequate capacity for the disposal of our trash, but we also have to show how we're going to achieve nine of the state mandated goals as far as waste reduction and recycling. So there's a number of things we must respond to. It is a format that's required by Ohio PA. It is not a format that we choose. It's one we have to follow. It is six chapters long and 25, 21 appendices. So it's 150-page document. We do have a six page, six-page executive summary available for you. But with your permission this evening, I would just like to go over the key priorities of the plan. Of course, then I can answer any questions about more of the details, but it's important for us to know our cities, townships, and villages to know what our priorities are for the next five years. First one, I want to assure New Franklin that we are not looking to raise our generation fee. That is how our agency is funded. For every ton of trash, we receive $5. Those funds are dedicated to certain projects, and we must operate under that budget. We, the last time we raised it was 2004, and there's no intent in this plan cycle to raise it any further, so that that fee will not increase. We will maintain all of our existing services. Hopefully, you have found that New Franklin residents utilize these. We do track who utilizes our service. Probably the most popular one is the Household Hazardous Waste Recycling Center. We have document shredding, recycling events. We have television collections, scrap tire. All of those programs remain in place. Along the lines of county-wide education, we feel as a solid waste district, it is our responsibility to educate on curbside recycling. So we are in your community getting messages about recycling and waste reduction and those kind of things. It's county-wide education. That's going to be maintained. The mayor mentioned something that's near and dear to our heart and my team at Reworks, and that's we are looking to expand our services for food scrap and food waste management. Looking to help with infrastructure, how to reduce food waste management. It's a really big material that goes into our landfills, and this plan allows for us to look into different solutions to help manage that material. We will also be looking at relocating our offices. This is probably one of the biggest changes to the solid waste plan. We'd like our offices to be more publicly accessible, and we'd like to look at possibly proposing a service center where we can collect difficult-to-manage materials. So all of this is subject to our Board of Trustees' approval, but in the plan, it allows us, over the next five years, to look at our opportunity to do those things. So there is nothing concrete set yet. It just gives us the freedom to explore that. Lastly, I think it's really important to know, and it's, and quite honestly, if I may brag about New Franklin, is the Community Recycling Assistance Grant. And this is the grant that we provide funds for curbside recycling and compost. And I just really am so very proud of a partnership we've had with New Franklin, Mr. Kepler, Mayor, on establishing some of the yard waste efforts in New Franklin, but these grant funds are remaining in place for the duration of the plan, and we continue to hope they go toward causes like the one New Franklin's utilizing, also curbside recycling. Either way, we want to make sure to focus that financial support that is in place. As far as ratification, in order for this plan to be approved, we have to have at least 60% of the population, as it's represented by cities, townships, and villages, including our largest municipality. So we have a public comment period that will end on November 25th. We had our public hearing that was yesterday. Nobody attended. No questions were asked, I should say. And then we have to have these resolutions approved by the municipalities that represent these populations. If we do not meet 60%, and we did not get the plan ratified, then the Ohio PA comes in and they create the plan for us. The unique circumstances we're in this year, which everybody here can relate to this at some level, is typically we have about 90 days to ask communities for this ratification. We are delayed. I take accountability for that timeframe, but we're coming to municipalities and asking for you all to look and consider approval of this plan at the same time we have our public comment period going on. And then our due date for that would be November 29th, which with the holiday, we're actually looking at November 25th. So our goal is to have at least 60%. This was a direction I was provided by our Strategic Planning Committee to try to capture that 60% to get this plan in place to meet the existing deadline. So with that, I would entertain any questions about not only the plan, but the ratification process. I know it's a lot, a very short amount of time, but again, we're just really appreciative to share what we hope to do with our agency and explain the circumstances that we're under right now.
Thank you, Marcy. Anybody have any questions?
I do. You're asking, Marcy, that we go ahead and do this tonight. Am I right?
Yes, that is correct.
And I, I don't have a problem with it. I think it's wonderful, but I just wait to confirm we need to do it tonight.
To meet the deadline by the 25th. That would be what we're aiming for. Thank you.
Marcy, is there any way, this is kind of outside of just that plan, but some of the stuff that you mentioned, is there any way that we can partner with you guys on like a tire drop-off or a TV drop-off?
So I'll answer that a few ways. One, our scrap tire collection at our hazardous waste facility is open to all Summit County residents. At this point, our Community Recycling Assistance Grants cannot go for services that we already offer from our general operating budget. So we do encourage residents to bring their materials to our facilities and our collections. Of course, we would help you, you know, assistance in getting the word out on your event, but at least at this time, those grant funds cannot go toward existing services that we pay under our general operations. As far as televisions, we had a new format this year. COVID really changed the direction on that. We were actually hoping to go to municipalities and have you all host your own television collection, and then we would go around and collect it. But due to COVID, we actually adjusted that very quickly and ended up having it ourselves. So assuming everything is clear for next year, we would love to explore that again. But under the circumstances, we, we took that back under our property and did take televisions, over 300 televisions over the time period from July to October. So absolutely partnering is possible, but I want to make sure you understand that CRAIG funds are very much determined for items that are not provided by our agency separately.
Okay.
Andrew, I have another question.
Yes, ma'am.
Of Marcy. Marcy, what is the address that you would like for us to tell people that they can drop off those tires? And the TVs? What is the address? So we can maybe mention that at maybe a couple meetings? Or every other meeting, just so they know where to bring them?
I would love that opportunity. It is currently at our Household Hazardous Waste Facility, which is 1201 Graham Road. That is a seasonal operation, so it will not be accessible to the public again until June, actually, May or June of next year. But with your permission, I could give you some of our event flyers. We will announce all of our document shredding events, our scrap tire days, and our hazardous waste days in January of next year. We already have those dates established, so I would love to share that information at that time.
If you'll bring it in, we will mention it at our meetings for you.
That would be great. Thank you.
Hey, we've gone this far, Marcy. Let me ask you. I hadn't thought about this before. But I mean, if we, if we accepted a volume out here of either tires or TVs, could we transport them in volume to, to the center on Graham Road? Or is that, I'm assuming, is that a possibility that we might be able to arrange with you?
I would tell you, televisions, that's possible. That was the format we were aiming for for this year. We actually bid out the services to have municipalities collect their own, and then we would come gather it. For scrap tires, at this point, bringing them to our hazardous waste center is, is not a possibility. We would actually try to help you coordinate direct disposal of those tires to a vendor locally.
We could possibly do a television and collect them here and then trans, you know, we cover the transport. Okay.
Quite honestly, we would pay for the transportation. We'd be looking for you to staff it. So yes, that is still 2020 made us take that back under our umbrella, but it is open for 2021 if that's still possible.
Excellent. Well, we'll take you up on that.
Great, thank you.
All right. Anyone else? Well, thank you very much, Marcy. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
You know, you want to drop off, by all means.
Oh, no, Marcy, you have to stay for the whole meeting. It's been a couple hours, but. Thank you so much for.
I do appreciate it. Thank you so much. Have a good evening.
Bye.
David, how you making out? No. Hey, David, you with us?
We'll say no.
We're calling back.
All right. Well, let's get going.
We lost you a minute. You still, you on there now?
Yeah, but I'm still not on the meeting.
Well, I got you. Well, you're, you're here by audio, so.
Okay.
We just finished the presentation, so we'll go ahead and get, go back to Andrew, Mr. Federman.
Give them the call-in information, so we can call in like Tony.
I'm, Katie, I can't quite hear you.
Sorry, do you want me to send him the call-in information so he can call in like Tony?
Yeah, why not? Just text it to him? Or email it. What are you gonna do?
I'll email it.
Hey, David.
Yes.
Yeah, Katie's gonna email you the call-in information, and maybe you can just call in and participate that way. That's what Tony's doing.
Okay.
Tony's out in Hawaii or somewhere.
All right. As soon as I get that, I'll get back on with you, Paul.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Fire away, Katie. All right, Mr. Federman or whoever.
All right, yeah, we'll, we'll open up committees. We have, let's see, our three first readings and two second readings. I guess started with myself with community development with the resolution 20-r-61, that 619. A resolution authorizing the City of New Franklin to prepare and submit an application to participate in the Ohio Public Works Commission's state capital improvement and/or local transportation improvement programs, and to execute contracts as required, and declaring that this resolution shall be effective immediately upon passage. I'm assuming this is, you were just, I'm assuming, reading, and now I'm all flustered from it. This is to get, what, about half?
Well, about half of what our share is. We, the whole project is, came in just a little bit over a million dollars. We received a little bit over $861,000 from the Ohio Municipal Bridge Fund. That was a competitive grant application that we succeeded on. GPD led us on that, and those funds will be available starting in fiscal year 2021, so we, we hope to be able to do this in, in July of 2021. That left our share at 145,000. We're asking OPWC for 77,000 of that. Why that number? There's a, there's an OPWC formula that's relatively complex. That's all I'll say. And that's the max that we could ask for, so that's what we're asking for. Again, GPD is leading us on that application, and, and they're optimistic. I talked to Josh Schlagge today, and, and he's, he feels we, we have a real good chance of, of getting these additional funds. That would take our share down to a little bit over $68,000. We've had a discussions with the Summit County Engineer that, for them to kick in at least $20,000 towards that, which would take our share down to about 48,000, so this would be another nice piece of the puzzle if, if, if we can get it awarded. And because it's an OPWC grant, there's no match or anything like that, but they do require a resolution confirming that we're authorized to make the application. So that's what this resolution is about.
Okay. Thank you. I, I don't see any reason why we couldn't pass that tonight. Does anyone have any questions on it? All right, move on to second reading of Resolution 20-r-57. A resolution authorizing the City of New Franklin to enter into a two-year policing contract with the Village of Clinton, declaring that this resolution shall be effective immediately upon passage. What did Clinton come up with?
Clinton, a couple of things happened. One, their mayor had a long conversation with our chief, and our captain forwarded down a lengthy summary of the variety of services that, that are provided. And, and their, their mayor, Mayor Leggett advised me that their council then understood things better, appreciated the rate that we were offering, and at least indicated that they would be prepared to request the, to approve the, the two-year contract as proposed. In fact, if you remember, when we just started, to start the conversation back in May or June, we proposed a couple options. One was that per-person contract price, which took it up to about 188,000. Now, that was quite a jump, because they were paying about 126,000. And we offered that for four years, because that's what had been done in the past. And they weren't interested in that, and they thought, well, you know, they said, no, let's see about the two-year. When I talked with their last, she said, you know, they actually, by the time they were done talking, thought that maybe the four-year would be better for them. And at that point, I, I told them I thought that it might be best if we just, we already had the resolution presented. The two-year contract was presented. It may not, there is a, a six-month exit clause in this. So either, either side can opt out of this with six months' notice. And what's, there's, there's a slight realm of uncertainty in terms of our future financial relationship with Clinton, and that has to do with dispatch. Because by probably April of next year, we'll have the South Summit Dispatch up and running. And this contract calls for us to provide police and fire dispatch, which we've always done for them. You know, once we're COG, it's not us, and, and whether or not Clinton kind of just comes along on our toed, coattails to that dispatch remains to be discussed. Certainly, they will for the first year. But we're still going to have those discussions relative to the COG. So it may be that, I, I expect this will end up being a one-year contract, and, and either it'll be revised in one way, shape, or form for future contracts, maybe separate numbers for dispatch. And so there's a lot going on down there, because on top of everything else, the fire contract expires next year with Clinton. And there's a few bumps in the road there, too, so I, I'm, I would, I, I'm recommending passage, and, but I'm telling you that we're going to be taking a hard look in the first half of 2021, and certainly by June of 2021, deciding whether or not we want to opt out at the end of, to make it a one-year contract.
Right.
And I told the mayor this. She knows, she knows that's, that's how we, how I feel.
Thanks, bye.
All right.
All right.
All right, so is there, Dave, if you don't mind, I'll wrap up my committee and throw it to you, right? So is, anyone have any questions about the policing contract?
Okay. So just to clarify, are we voting on a one-year contract or two-year contract?
Two-year contract is what's here. And then we, we, we can, there's a, as I said, an exit clause if we decide to, to not, you know, at the six-month mark here. We can terminate the contract for no reason by giving them six months' notice. So we'll make a final decision on that. Clear, I, of course, I'll have you involved in that. We'll have all, you know, I'll let you know what's going on. And, you know, follow your lead on that, but depending on what you decide, and, but if we, if we decide to just make it a one-year contract, either, I think by that time, we'll have a, another contract to propose, or we'll be saying, this isn't working out, and, and Clinton's, and Clinton on her own may decide to go some different direction, so. But it would be a two-year contract we'd be approving.
All right. Be good to move forward on this tonight, then. Nobody has objections. All right, Resolution 20-r-58, a resolution by the Council of the City of New Franklin to adopt the Summit County Solid Waste Management Plan by the Summit Akron Solid Waste Management Authority, DBA Reworks for New Franklin. We heard from Marcy earlier. I don't think we, does anyone have anything else further that they have to say about it? Yeah, I think we can move on that tonight, too. Okay, we'll close community development at 6:26, and I'll toss it to you, Dave.
Thank you. We finally got it going. I went through days without power and finally had it a little bit yesterday. Worked a lot of hours, and here I am. So sorry it took me so long to get hooked up, but I guess we got through our committee meetings, and anybody else have anything for their committees?
We got, we have to get to finance.
Oh, I'm sorry. All right, finance, Jim.
Okay, we've opened a finance committee at 27. First reading for Resolution 20-r-6.
He froze, Jim. Now you're back. He froze there for a while. It stopped right after he said first reading.
Okay. Resolution 20-r-62, a resolution authorizing expenditure of coronavirus aid, relief and economic security funds, and reimbursement of public health and safety payroll, and declaring that this resolution shall be effective immediately upon passage. And if you're still with me, we'll throw it to the mayor and let him explain this. I think that would just be the easiest way to go about this.
Yeah, and we've been talking about this for several weeks. And as you know, the, the funds that came in, both from Summit County and from the state, totaled roughly $1.5 million. Treasury has indicated that we could reimburse ourselves for 100% of the payroll expenses for our safety forces. And there's a lot of, there was a lot of language in between. Were they substantially dedicated to COVID? And there was an, our issue, what we had to prove, and at the end of the day, they said, it's assumed that 100% of their responsibilities were COVID-related. And there's every assure, as much assurance as we can get, that Summit County, the funds we got from Summit County, the Ohio Auditor and US Treasury will all abide by that, but a more cautious approach was to take something less than 100% of the safety payroll. And, and so that's what we're suggesting here. The, I've talked with, with the Auditor's Office, and I told them we were going to try to do something under 50%. By doing 40%, we will expend virtually all of the 1.4 million, and then we've reserved 100,000 for other COVID expenses, and I'll have subsequent legislation on that one. But by indicating that, that at least 40% of our safety forces were dedicated, substantially dedicated in one way, shape, or form to COVID, therefore, we will seek reimbursement of 40% of our payroll expense for those folks, and that number is going to be right about 1.4 million. And that, that involves daily sanitizing, answering calls, tracking information, you know, all of the cleaning, all of the preparation, you know, separate vehicles for travel, any number of things. So we think 40% is a conservative number, and we, and we're confident that, most importantly, that that'll pass muster. We know it will with the county. We, we are confident it will with the Auditor and also with the Treasury. So this legislation would be the authorization to, to start reimbursing those funds.
Right. Okay. Questions? Anybody? Then we'll go the way, the three.
That would be good.
Readings on this? And we'll move on to Resolution 20-r-63, a resolution to authorize approval of a proposal from Southeast Security for security measures at the New Franklin Service Garage Administration Building, and declaring that this resolution shall be effective immediately upon passage. This is for, again, security at our service garage and administrative area. Total of $13,994.19 says, and we have the, the incredible honor of Mr. Kepler, our Deputy Service Director, with us this evening to go through this and explain what's going on and why we're doing this. Mr. Kepler?
I don't have a lot, just a little, but the, the security is needed with, we have Linda's down there now, a new person added, too, and it just would be very helpful if she could see who's approaching the doors and, and record what's going on down there. Just seems like since we got a new building, everybody is coming through that door quite often, more than what I has in the past, and it's definitely needed, so that way we can see who's coming through the gate. So they gave us a pretty decent price on the cameras and everything, so they want to get started soon as possible. About all I got.
And is this just for that door, or is there more involved?
There's two doors, four, two doors, four cameras, recording device, monitor, bunch of other equipment that I'm not familiar with on.
There's an intercom, too, is there not, Fred?
There's an intercom where, and a buzzers where she can talk to the people before they even come in.
Questions? This is a, is a pretty important thing. We, we have Linda down there, as mentioned. I, I'm assuming a lot of times she's down there by herself, and, you know, this, this is a, a five-acre site that has a lot of equipment, and, you know, it needs to be secure. We need to make sure that our, our staff is secured down there also. So this is, I think, a valuable thing. Mr. Adamson, did you have anything to add?
Jim, I have. No, I'd echo what you said. It's, you know, as soon as we, we've probably been fortunate that we haven't had problems down there in the past, because oftentimes, the whole crew's away, and there's no one there. And, but now that we got a live body in there, I appreciate your acknowledgement of that as well. Once that happened, we knew that we needed to do this, and so it took a while to get the pricing and, and the quote, but we would certainly like to move on this as soon as we're able to.
And does this have anything to do with entry to the yard itself?
I'm gonna say not yet. Go ahead, Brian.
I don't think yet. He was setting up the monitor and the recorder was for, we're doing that part for future of putting the intercom, another intercom at the gate and a camera, or, or all one-piece, the camera and the intercom at one, but we weren't, we were gonna kind of split that up a little bit, not do everything at one time, but at least she'll be secure with getting in and out of that building, for sure.
Mr. Federman?
Yeah, so the wording has COVID-19 in response to COVID-19. Can we use any of that CARES Act money for this?
Yeah, that's the intention. This will be one of the things that we'll include there. We've had a lot of conversations, and I've networked a lot with a lot of the different mayors around the state and how they're spending their, their CARES money, and, but we think it fits. It, you know, certainly, first of all, by limiting public access, so that, so that people have to be buzzed in rather than, than just walking in. You know, there's, there's less, the general security part of it, we think it'll pass muster as a CARES expenditure. So we're going to intend to include this in that $100,000.
All right, sounds good. Certainly nothing against cameras. I have them at the Federman compound, so I think that they're a nice feature to have. And do we get to any more bids on this, or is this the only one we got?
That is the only one we got.
And I, I will tell you, on that note, we've, they have been our most consistent vendor here. And they've been very responsive, and they've done a nice job for us. They work with us on the security out here in the, in the front office. We, we stepped away from them one time. Susan, do you recall? I can't remember. Was that on the, on the fire system?
Um, yeah, we did step away from them on the fire system, but I, and I can't recall if they actually do that as well. Um, yeah, we did step away from them on the fire system, but I, and I can't recall if they actually do that as well because it's been a while. But there was one other time, too, I think that, that we didn't use them and we, it didn't work out well.
Yeah, so it was really, we got a comfort, there's a comfort zone with these folks and good relationship.
When we were putting in the fire alarm system, or we used another company putting the alarm system in the administrative building. And we had the luxury of time there where we could seek other bids. And I think with this COVID, if I'm correct, this has to be done by the end of the year. So we're a little bit of a, a time crunch to be able to seek in other bids and, you know, move forward. And since we have used them in the past and they've always been pretty fair with us, I believe.
Yeah, and that's good. I appreciate that, that reminder as well, Jim, because this has to be installed and paid for by December thirtieth.
Paul, I have a question. Maybe it's for Brian or for you. Will this, the cameras, will this monitor so that they can see anybody coming in, not just to the one building, but coming into the facility?
They will. Pretty sure there's four cameras.
That's what I read.
I think he's going to have one in one building, one in another building, and then two in front of the main new building crisscrossings and it's going to be shine, pointing towards the gate.
Okay, thank you. That was my question.
Other questions?
Terry Argon here, as far as.
Hi, Terry Argon.
Hi, I'm happy with this. I would cut, go for this because the safety is what's more important to our people.
Absolutely, thank you. Anybody else? Because we are on a bit of a time crunch with this, I, I think it makes sense for us to go ahead and ask to wait at the three readings on this resolution if everybody's okay with that.
Yes.
Okay, we will close our finance committee at six thirty-nine. Thank you for your patience and participation.
Thank you, Jim. Again, is there anything else, anybody else's committees this evening? Alrighty then, we'll go ahead and move right into our council meeting. I'll call the order. The city of New Franklin Council Meeting this Wednesday, November eighteenth, twenty twenty. We're going to call it six thirty-nine. Like to all stand for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag. Of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you. Can we get a roll call, please?
Mr. Cots?
President.
Mr. Hargit?
Yes, President.
Mrs. Jones?
Present.
Mr. Fetterman?
Here.
Mr. Hawk?
Here.
Mr. Stock?
Here. All right, I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes from the regular scheduled meeting of November fourth, twenty twenty.
Second.
All right, any comments, questions on the minutes? Roll call, please.
Mr. Hargit?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Fetterman?
Yes.
Mr. Hawk?
Yes.
Mr. Stock?
Yes.
Mr. Cots?
Yes.
All right, thank you. I'd like to make a motion to approve the financials for October twenty twenty, subject to audit.
Second.
Got a first and second. Any questions on the, the financials? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Fetterman?
Yes.
Mr. Hawk?
Yes.
Mr. Stock?
Yes.
Mr. Cots?
Yes.
Mr. Hargit?
Yes.
All right, thank you. We're going to go to our public comments. So far, Katie, I see one. Somebody is. Asking to write the bid specifications and get some competition. This kind of money being spent, we need more than one bid. As one of our comments. Anybody want to address that, Paul? Anybody?
I think we did speak to it to some degree. There is, Mr. Cots has reminded us, there is a, a sense of urgency on this one and. It, it's a lot of money, but in, in some respect, it's, you know, it's, it's below the price it requires bids. We don't reach that threshold until it's, until we hit fifty thousand dollars. I, I think the comfort level that we have with this company and the fact that they were available to quote it for us and also available to get it in. Is why in this case we didn't look for more than one bid.
Yeah, I did want to, to piggyback on that, that these aren't, yeah, we need to make it clear that these aren't bids, these are quotes because the bidding, you know, it has to be fifty thousand to give it a bid, so we don't really have a bid spec that would need to go out. It's, these would just be quotes that we would normally get. To see, you know, where is the best price and, and in certain situations, we may have less quotes and, or none, depending on emergency situations.
All right, thank you, Paul. Thank you, Susan. Any other comments on that? All right, we're going to move into our legislation this evening. We'll go to our first reading of resolution number twenty dash R dash sixty-one, Kelly.
A resolution authorizing the city of New Franklin to prepare and submit an application to participate in the Ohio Public Works Commission. State capital improvement and or local transportation improvement programs and to execute contracts as required. And declaring that this resolution shall be effective immediately upon passage.
All right, thank you.
Okay, this resolution is assigned to community development and I move that we waive the three on this.
Second.
We got a first and second. Roll call, please.
Mr. Fetterman?
Yes.
Mr. Hawk?
Yes.
Mr. Stock?
Yes.
Mr. Cots?
Yes.
Mr. Hargit?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
I, I, real quick, just want to mention that I'm, I'm sure everybody that's watching knows, but this is for the Benner Road Bridge.
All right, thank you, Jim.
That will be replacing next year.
Thank you, sir. If there are no more questions, I move that we adopt resolution twenty dash R dash sixty-one.
I'll second that. We got a first and second. Any further discussion or questions? Roll call, please.
Mr. Fetterman?
Yes.
Mr. Hawk?
Yes.
Mr. Stock?
Yes.
Mr. Cots? I think he's frozen.
Frozen.
Yes.
Hi there.
Asking if you adopt resolution twenty R sixty-one.
I do, thank you.
Mr. Hargit?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
All right, that passes six to zero. Thank you. We'll go to resolution twenty dash R dash sixty-two, Kelly.
A resolution authorizing expenditure of coronavirus aid, relief and economic security funds for reimbursement of public health and safety payroll. And declaring that this resolution shall be effective immediately upon passage.
This resolution is assigned to the finance committee. We move to waive the three readings on twenty R sixty-two.
Second.
We got a first and second, Kelly.
Mr. Hawk?
Yes.
Mr. Stock?
Yes.
Mr. Cots?
Yes.
Mr. Hargit?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Fetterman?
Yes.
We move to adopt resolution twenty R sixty-two.
Second.
First and second, any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Hawk?
Yes.
Mr. Stock?
Yes.
Mr. Cots?
Yes.
Mr. Hargit?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Fetterman?
Yes.
All right, that passes six to zero. We'll move to resolution number twenty dash R dash sixty-three.
A resolution to authorize approval of a proposal from Southeast Security. For security measures at the New Franklin Service Garage Administration Building and declaring that this resolution shall be effective immediately upon passage.
This resolution is assigned to the finance committee. We move to waive the three readings on twenty R sixty-three.
Second.
Second.
We got a first and second. Roll call, please.
Mr. Stock?
Yes.
Mr. Cots?
Yes.
Mr. Hargit?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Fetterman?
Yes.
Mr. Hawk?
Yes.
We move to adopt resolution twenty R sixty-three.
Second.
First and second. Roll call, please.
Mr. Stock?
Yes.
Mr. Cots? Mr. Cots, do you approve?
Yes. Yes.
Mr. Hargit?
Apparently I'm the David Stock of this meeting.
I'm good now, though.
Yes, you are.
Yes.
Mr. Hargit?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Fetterman?
Yes.
Mr. Hawk?
Yes.
All right, that passes six to zero. I just came off of two, over two days with no power, Jim, so trying to recuperate here.
I'll give that a shot. I'll just shut everything down for two days.
We're off the grid, we're off the grid, had burned more firewood in the last three days than we have in last winter, so anyhow. All right, we'll move to our second readings of resolution number twenty dash R dash fifty-seven.
A resolution authorizing the city of New Franklin to enter into a two-year policing contract with the village of Clinton. And declaring that this resolution shall be effective immediately upon passage.
Resolution was assigned to community development and I move that we waive the final reading.
Second.
First and second. Roll call, please.
Mr. Stock?
Yes.
Mr. Cots?
Yes.
Mr. Hargit?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Fetterman?
Yes.
Mr. Hawk?
Yes.
I move that we adopt resolution twenty dash R dash fifty-seven.
Second.
Got a first and a second. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Stock?
Yes.
Mr. Cots?
Yes.
Mr. Hargit?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
No.
Mr. Fetterman?
Yes.
Mr. Hawk?
Yes.
All right, that passes five to one. Move to resolution number twenty dash R dash fifty-eight.
A resolution by the council of the city of New Franklin to adopt the Summit County Solid Waste Management Plan. By the Summit slash Akron Solid Waste Management Authority, doing business as reworks for New Franklin.
This resolution was assigned to community development and I move that we waive the final reading on this one as well.
Second.
First and second. Roll call, please.
Mr. Cots?
Yes.
Mr. Hargit?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Fetterman?
Yes.
Mr. Hawk?
Yes.
Mr. Stock?
Yes.
Move we adopt twenty dash R dash fifty-eight.
Second.
Got a first and a second. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Cots?
Yes.
Mr. Hargit?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Fetterman?
Yes.
Mr. Hawk?
Yeah.
Mr. Stock?
Yes. Okay, that passes six to zero. That takes care of our legislation this evening. We're going to move into the mayor's report.
All right, thank you. And thanks for. Being on top of these and understanding the urgency as to some and, and we appreciate the, your support. South Main Street is done and we're actually getting compliments. So I don't know what your experience has been, but it's really kind of fun to drive on that road now. And I really, I have gotten a, a number of people reach out. And say how much they appreciate the fact that it, that, that that work is completed. The Aqua, we had a construction meeting here on Monday as a preliminary to Aqua beginning work. And they will beginning work on, begin work at the beginning of December. So shortly after Thanksgiving, they will start, they, they're going to follow where, where they're extending from, which is right down there by Josephus. So actually, the first part of it is going to be in green as they come up Caston to Maine and then come up Maine to West Caston. The projection is anywhere from six to twelve months for completion. And, and the nine months seems like, you know, a, a pretty solid guess. So, you know, that would put the, that would put completion somewhere around the end of August of next year. We'll have the water in. So it's, you know, we, we've waited so long for this and it's almost like, gosh, this is really going to happen. And I'm here to report to, gosh, this is really going to happen. So we're, we're continuing our discussions too relative to development. We've met with a specific developer this week. For residential development who's interested and we're going to be spending the next. Ninety days really looking hard. We've already identified our property owners up on ninety-three and we're going to be talking to, to them and scouting out. Locations that we can promote to, to developers for the residential component. And we're going to continue to work on. A mock-up or a artist rendition of what that might look like, what it, what, what it can look like up there. I could go into more detail and we've got a lot of ideas on it, but I will just say this about it. One of the things we're looking hard at is connecting to, to of our major. Outdoor entertainment venues and that's Portage Lake State Park and the Ohio Erie Canal tow path. I mean, these are things when we talk to these residential developers, particularly looking for that stand, that maintenance free housing, a place for people that maybe want to have that, that. That ranch, one floor ranch that for mobility and for a lot of our seniors to stay in the community and we hear that a lot. What, you know, they want activities. And so we're talking with AMATs about trying to have an all purpose of maybe about an eight foot wide or ten foot wide trail that somehow runs along ninety-three. And gets us to the state park. And then we are also, I had a meeting today that. Because the sewer will be coming up Vanderhoof. And it will come from Van Buren. That's right there at the tow path. And we're going to, we're starting to explore, we're going to explore grant possibilities to create a bike path. And maybe even over, you know, they're going to tear that up anyway. So maybe we lay a bike path on top of it so that people could actually, you know, park at the state park. You know, enjoy that, get on that, that, that bike path, get down to the tow path and then you got a hundred and ten miles. I mean, it really is, is a big plus. So naturally, it's, it's exciting stuff. So, so we're, we're working in all those areas. The windstorm was. Interesting to say the least, but I just mentioned it to thank our, our service department. They were out there long hours as usual. You know, nobody had to call them and tell them to get out there. They were out working. The police department as well, blocking off roads. This was, this ended up being a bad one. I think Renninger's still shut and. So it was throughout northeast Ohio and, and for instance, I've been talking with the first energy. Connection that we have and she was able to tell me yesterday that they finally got everything on in Maslin, so they were able to direct their Maslin crews up this way to help. Here in New Franklin, but this, this was a long pull for a lot of folks without power and, but our, our guys did everything. But this, this was a long pull for a lot of folks without power, and, but our guys did everything that they could and performed admirably as well. On a wider note, the pickleball, we did the resurfacing over at the Lakeside Park. We could install right now, but we have to have temperatures consistently over fifty degrees for the paint, and rather than take a chance on that, we're going to wait till spring and have the nice painted court in there. We've got the nets. So we'll have a nice kickoff on that. You know, maybe we'll have a tournament with the council members as a kickoff, but we'll see. I think maybe I mentioned to you tennis courts, and the Parks Department is, is interested in that, and we have some people that are interested in that. The schools are interested in it, and we've had a conversation with Manchester Schools about possible placement at the Sisler Park compound. They, we would, there's a parcel there. It's an odd configuration. If you look on the property map, you see what we own and what they own. And there's a piece there that's contiguous to ours that's, that would be maybe just right for the tennis courts. So I've had a preliminary discussion with the administration about possibly if they wanted to deed that property to us without cost. And then we bear the expense of constructing the courts, and then we have some type of long-term relationship with them where their teams are able to use the courts. We've got four school districts out here. Green has their own tennis courts. Northwest has their own tennis courts. But right now, Manchester and Coventry, to my knowledge, are both using barbed-in courts. So we would certainly open that, make that offer to Coventry as well to have access to these courts, and I think everybody'd be thrilled. So we're doing some pricing on that right now to see what the cost would be. But, you know, the fact that we wouldn't have to dedicate land to it or make, have any expense for land, that's attractive. So we're going to be talking about that through the winter and maybe come with something in the spring on that. Maybe it's an expense that we could, that we could maybe finance ourselves over three years or so with, with park revenue money. We think it's going to be at least maybe two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars or so, but that's an area, that's a part of the community that hasn't been served here. A lot of our park money is spent on baseball and football, and that's beautiful, but not everybody's playing baseball and football. So.
Hey, Paul.
Yes.
Real quick, while you're talking about the tennis, it was mentioned a couple of meetings ago when you brought it up that the National Tennis Federation or whatever provides grants for cities to promote tennis and stuff. Have we had an opportunity to look into that and see if there's some, some help available there?
Yeah, I turned that over to our grant specialist, Leland Matheny, and he's exploring that right now. So we're, we'll, we'll, we'll look under every stone and see if we can come up with some money. Last two things, one is just today, I don't know if it was late yesterday or earlier today, the Senate, I may have mentioned to you that the, there was a, a bill that permitted us to have these virtual public meetings to satisfy the Open Meetings Act requirements, but that would, they expired at the early part of December. And so the legislature is back conducting what they call lame duck session, and in any event, the Senate has passed an extension permitting virtual meetings. The bill was introduced to be thirty days after, at the end of the declaration of state of emergency. I have no idea what went on in session with them, but they ended up extending the authority for virtual public meetings to, through July first of twenty-twenty-one. I don't know if that's their own personal forecast of how long it will be before it's safe for everybody to gather. I suspect that they tried to pick a date way out, not to say that we have to keep doing these, but we are, but, but we are allowed to do these. And now the House still has to pass that, but the anticipation is that'll happen and should happen even this week. I'll let you know if it doesn't, and I'm not exactly sure what we do at that point, nor does anybody else in the state know what they're going to do. And lastly, we had kind of started with Nolly Elementary and reached out if there was anything that, always conversations about, you know, how can we help for the holidays? I'm probably misstating that, but I'm, I think it came out of them, out of Nolly, and the idea was, well, maybe we could adopt some families, you know, maybe not the city themselves, but the employees, the staff, council members. How about if we adopted some families for Christmas, collect some money among ourselves and, and try to do something nice? So we reached out to the other, to all four school districts, and we received follow-ups, and it looks like we could, we could sponsor a total of eight families. We could sponsor two families. We can sponsor as many as you want to. But what they presented to us were, a couple of the schools only had two that they recommended among their elementary students. And so what we are, what we intend to do is sponsor eight families, two from each school district. We've, Katie's already talked to the police and fire. The fire have already made commitments, the fire union and the fire commission. So we're figuring it'll probably be about two-hundred dollars a family. And so we're somewhere around sixteen-hundred dollars. We got to raise, and it looks like we already raised about eight-hundred dollars of it. So if, you know, we're going to encourage, we haven't announced it to the staff, the full staff. I'll do that tomorrow or the next day. And we're going to seek solicitations, donations from the, from the folks who work here, and certainly a few folks are interested. What I haven't figured out quite yet is if you want to write a check, who you write the check to. And I, and naturally, I didn't run this by Susan yet, but, and I, Susan, do you have an idea on that? If we do this, if somebody wanted to write a check, what would be best?
Um, yeah, I, I don't know, because I don't know enough of the particulars.
I'll tell you what, we'll think about it. I'll find out, and we'll let you know. And if you're able to donate, we'll let you know that. Naturally, if he gets cash, we give you a receipt. We'll make sure we chase all the funds, but, you know, I think.
Do you take Google Pay?
I don't know. That's a good question. I don't think, we're not going to take Bitcoins. But, yeah, maybe we, Google Pay, Apple Pay, I don't know. Pick and pay. Remember that one, Judy? All right. Okay. All right. Well, and that's all I have. Thank you.
All right. Thanks, Paul. Back to the power thing. Down here on Stump Road, we went forty-nine hours, about twenty of us. But we made it through it, and First Energy came out and got us going, and the road department got our road cleared off when they could Sunday later in the day, but we made it through, and we appreciate, you know, the First Energy people being out there taking care of business and, you know. So anyhow, so thank you for that, and Susan, we'll move to the finance report.
Just a couple of things that we are definitely, we've been working on the CARES Act, spreadsheets that we have to get ready to be able to, to do a distribution of that money to, from the, you know, the separate funds to, to the, actually to the CARES funds. So the mayor got a taste of that today because there was a pile of spreadsheets about, what do you say, about four inches high at least that, that, of, that we have to do to basically be able to do that correcting journal to use that money. So we're working on that, and then getting close to our end-of-the-year things. One thing I would like you to keep in mind, I don't need an answer of this today, but usually we try to set aside some date late in, in December for our last meeting. It may be only one item that's on the agenda, you know, for any transfers or whatever, but kind of keep that in mind, maybe at the next meeting, to be able to look at your schedules and set aside that date. You know, obviously, it can be a Zoom meeting, but in case we have any last year-end things that we need to take care of. So that's about it for me.
If I can chime in there, I will say that the year-end, I mean, this is, this is a pretty small staff we have, and they, they do a lot of work. And being here, you can really see that, and then you compare notes with other cities and see what they have. So they, I think we do an awful lot with not, with not too many. This is an enormous project, this reimbursement for the CARES Act. It's so much more than just hitting a button, and literally Susan had, I think she's through the first four months, August, September, October, November, yeah, out of ten months, she got six months out of the ten. And, and the, and it literally is a stack of documents like this, and that's just the payroll part of it. And then they have to go back, and we got to pull out the numbers for all of the, all the benefits, the opers and the insurance and all of it. And, and, and record and report that separately as well. And so it's, it's, it's a huge job, and it comes, of course, just the same way COVID came right on top of everything. It comes right at the busiest time of the year. This is when they have a lot of closeouts, et cetera. So I'm not saying we got to build a statue, but I will say that they're working really hard and effectively as well.
All right.
Paul, I would say God bless the, the office staff, honestly. Unless you do it, you don't understand it, and you're right. It's a ton of work, and it always has to be done right now and correctly. So we do appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Susan, Paul, Judy. We're going to go into old business, but I'm also going to like to say, it's the first time I've seen Judy Jones for a very long time. We usually just get to hear you, so good seeing you.
You know what, honey? I started using my phone because I thought this is not going to end for a while. I was using my, my computer, but I don't have a camera on it, but it feels good to see you, too.
All right. So we're all together. I've been struggling the last couple of weeks, but we got it down. But apparently down here in Stump Roadland, we don't have the best internet all the time or other things, so here we are. But any other old business?
I do.
Yes, sir.
Paul, have we gotten anywhere with these signs?
Um, no. No, we haven't. I'm forgetting where we, where we were. We were going to try to order some, I forget.
You were going to look and see if possibly some grant money would be available for order, you know, order signs or.
And I apologize for that one. And so, I mean, we're not looking for the, the exact sign you have behind you. We're looking at, or is that what you're looking at?
Well, we're looking to try to replace, you know, signs like this where we have two signs on top of one. We're concerned about the slow down children at play signs that have been around for many, many, many years.
And I got to back up. Let me, are you telling me that's a real sign?
Yes, sir.
Brian. How many of those we got out there? I've never seen that.
I believe it's on Latty, but I'm not, I, I, I'm not a hundred percent sure, but, but I believe it's on Latty.
Brian left.
Right. You ever seen it?
Is that a real sign?
Is that down on Odell?
It could be Odell. Yes.
Yeah, it might be. Yeah, I've seen it.
Do we have any more of those around? I hope not.
No, this is the only one I saw that's like this. But.
You know, gentlemen, there's another way of looking at it, too. If you saw a sign like that, you're going to slow down so you can read it.
Well, you're right about that.
It's going to get your attention.
That, that part is true.
Dual purpose.
I don't mean to make light of it, Jim. I guess we'll. Would, what would we like to see, something like that or?
Well, I think we, you know, I use, I use this, this photo because it's the most extreme. But I, I think we have the, like I said, the slow children playing or children in the air, whatever the sign says, those yellow signs that are out throughout the city that are, that are very old, they're faded, they're in disrepair. And when we brought it up a few meetings ago, it was brought to my attention through some, some citizens that I talked with, and we have a lot of young families moving into New Franklin, houses are selling like that. And, and, and so we have more kids out now, and we have more kids playing. And, you know, we're already at twenty-five miles an hour on, on streets, so, so we can't change the speed limit on them. But the signs, they're just, they're, I mean, you really, they, they need to be brightened up. I don't know if there's a different design that's more two thousand, twenty-twenty-ish versus nineteen fifty that would, you know, that we could replace them with to stand out a little bit more, to remind our drivers to slow down on, on our side streets where, where kids are out playing and, and, you know, try to promote that safety aspect.
Yeah, I mean, it's just like when somebody's got a baby-on-board sign. Do you drive any different, Jim, behind them? I mean, I, I guess a speed limit sign is great. I think people, if they see a children playing, I don't know if they're going to abide by a speed limit sign to see that sign. I mean, I don't know how that works, but I mean, mine should be sufficient, and people, I don't think, if they're going to abide the speed limit, don't care if there's children playing. It's just human nature of people that don't want to abide by the law. So.
Well, I, I guess that's certainly one way to look at it, and, and if we want to look at it that way, then, then we need to take those signs down because a lot of those signs are frankly an embarrassment to the city because they're so old, they're so faded, and they're, I mean, in disrepair, and, and they look horrible. So, you know, if, if the thought is that they're unnecessary, then let's remove them. Let's, let's get rid of them. And I'm not saying that to be mean or anything like that.
Yeah, I get it.
I think what you're saying is that we need more speed limit signs, maybe. So it will post the speed limit.
I, I don't, I don't necessarily think we need more speed limit signs. The, the speed limit signs are, are posted where they should be. When you turn onto a new street, the sign is, you know, the signs are there in a proper thing, and we, we have the signs, you know, in some areas, they're, they're in different parts of the street where you wouldn't necessarily have a speed limit sign. But, but again, this is, you know, kind of like what David said, if you see the sticker on a car, it's the same old sticker you've seen it a hundred times before. But if, if we have new, fresh signs, you know, maybe that does get somebody's attention. Maybe that does give them a reason to slow down. But, but again, on the other side, like I mentioned, if, if the thought is that they're unnecessary, okay, then, then let's get rid of them because again, they, they, they don't look good in the city, and, and we need to, you know, do what we can to help our neighborhoods, you know, continue to look good because people are taking care of their properties, and we need to take care of our property, I guess.
Hey, Brian, just for discussion purposes, a sign like, what do we pay for a sign like that?
I don't know for that, for that sign. I mean, a speed limit sign costs one-hundred-and-fifty dollars for a speed limit sign. And we have a bunch of speed limit signs, or I'm sorry, stop signs, stop signs, and we have a bunch of stop signs that are faded and need replaced. It's just getting the order in and ordering a bunch of signs, which is.
Well, and having the money to do it, too. I mean, that's another factor. So Jim, you did mention the possibility of grants. I'm going to have, I'll have Leland look at that and see if, and then, and the next question would become, you know, how many? You know, we, we want to be fair if we're going to, you know, that we get enough that we spread them around to communities that need them and don't favor one community over another. So, you know, it's certainly worth, worth pursuing. So I'll have Leland take a look.
Okay.
Brian, we used BWC grants for some signs and things as well, didn't we?
I haven't, we haven't, not, not since I've taken over.
I think they have some safety stuff that possibly you could use, some safety grants that you could possibly use towards signs, too, that just a thought to keep in.
I'll steer Leland that way.
There was a grant a few years that a lot of municipalities took advantage of. It was all street name signs. I mean, people got, municipalities Bath got a hundred thousand dollars' worth of free signs and posts to replace every street name sign, so, but I don't know if that's still available, or we can try to find something. I mean, I'm all for finding a grant to, I mean, we have some stop signs that are faded out pretty bad that need to be replaced, and, but we got to go through and do that winter project.
All right. Thanks, everybody. Any other old business? All right, how about new business?
Yeah, I was going to wait until our new business, and I'll just echo what you said. It's nice to see Judy's face. It's been a few months, so good to see you.
Thank you, kiddo. It's always nice to see you.
Any other new business? All right. As far as public questions, I'm just going to read a comment back to, it's been a little bit up there, but it says to wait till someone, to wait till want a security system. it's been a little bit up there, but it says to wait till someone, to wait till want a security system, then put a deadline on installing it to make it an emergency is not good for the people of New Franklin. You do not know if we can get more for our money or better, or better equipment. This is not right. That's just a comment. I want to make sure I'm reading every comment and question we get. All right, any, and that's all I see. Katie, anything on your end? I mean, we're looking at, go ahead.
One more just came in. Can we read it or do you see it?
What's that? I didn't hear you.
You want me to read it or do you see it?
I don't, I don't see. Oh, wait, here we go, right at the end. We don't need more signs. Many signs are repetitive. If they won't follow this sign saying it twice, it's no good. Is that the one you're looking at, Katie? All right. So that's another comment. All right, other than that, I don't see anything. Paul, any executive session in our forecast tonight? All right. I'd like to make a motion that we adjourn.
Second.
Got a second? All in favor? Nice have it.
Happy Thanksgiving, everybody.
Yep, everybody, happy Thanksgiving, December second, twenty twenty. We'll do this again. We've been working a lot of hours, but I'm going to try to get home earlier next week and get this figured out a little better this time. So good seeing everybody and getting happy Thanksgiving. Good night.
Happy Thanksgiving.
Good night.